I call this meeting for picture eyes and viewing in the future, exciting to play. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Frericks?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed? Ms. Vogt?
Here.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Mr. Burris?
Here.
Mr. Coon?
Here.
And more.
Thank you. Public participation. Please note this meeting is being held in person and will also have remote participation available. In-person participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address counsel from the seat and table provided. The public comment must comply with Order 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. Remote participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with Orders 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. I will start public participation with Ms. Potts, who is reading the letter.
I received this letter in person on July 24th from Thomas Scott. In regard to the Pepsi Hill proposal, Mr. Scott does not feel the residential development should go in this area for two reasons. Number one, on the east and north side of the site are active railroad tracks and this poses a safety concern. Number two, bioban users and stores hexane gas at their facility. This gas would ignite and explode and people within a four to five block radius could be injured. And that's all.
Thank you. Let's go to remote participation, Carolyn. No? No one? Thank you. Public participation in person. Derek Brune.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Top Light Grain, my name is Derek Brune, General Manager. And again, it's to the same concerns, the Pepsi Hill Development and the proposed development. The facility that we have directly to the south handles three to three and a half million bushels of grain. That typically comes in all by truck and a lot of that comes in via Park Street. So about a third of that traffic comes through Park Street. And an average fall will handle about forty-five hundred trucks. So that means that a third of that's going to come through that area where the proposed development of twenty new homes are going to be. Twenty-one, actually. The other side of that, on the outbound side, we typically will ship about eight hundred and fifty semi-loads on the outbound and additional eight hundred rail cars will travel on that truck. So again, the biggest concern is safety and when you put residential into an industrial area, what that may do for the young families. A lot of these are multi-level facilities in which they're going to attract younger potential families that are things one to three bedroom, is the way I understand it. Additionally, there's a walking path. In my opinion, we need to make sure that there's plenty of barriers along that walking path so that the kids and people using that are protected from the rail cars moving. Other than that, that's about all I have. Grain elevator, we're here. The community has built up around us. You guys have been very supportive to Top Light Grain and the growth that they've had. So I appreciate that and look forward to continuing growth. Just have concerns with this development and what it may mean in that industrial area.
Thank you very much. Rachel LeJune?
Hi. I came listening to the specific site for also addressing the new development with the rental properties. I trust the city and you all to make sure that the safety standards are addressed and met there. I wanted to just speak out tonight in favor of twenty new units of rentals in Monticello. In my position, I help about sixteen victims of domestic violence a year. Usually that means finding new homes for forty to fifty of them. And we frequently have to go out of Monticello in order to get them into affordable rental. So I just wanted to share that with you all. I did a little bit of digging on the U.S. Census and Monticello has twenty-five point one percent of all of its residential properties are rentals. The average rental is one thousand seven dollars per month. So when we are facing someone who's starting over or a new job, someone who is starting to make it on their own without any other financial support, a thousand dollars a month is a lot to be looking at. I know that this new development is probably a higher price point than many of the people we help would be able to afford, but I also do think that there are a lot of young professional couples and people living in smaller units that maybe would be able to afford a higher price point, therefore opening up some of the smaller apartment units for those we serve. We would love to be able to keep kids in Monticello in the school district that they are now used to and familiar and that's often a challenge and leaves us out of town. So I just wanted to speak up, as I said, there are safety concerns and I, of course, am just as equally concerned that we make the right choice about location, but that was what you all are here for. Now, I just wanted to speak to that idea and we see it in the very person.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Moving on, consent agenda.
Mayor. Somebody on the chat asked you to speak.
Okay. Great.
Okay, I'm going to say.
Okay, I'm here. Just my one feedback that while the audio may be a little bit... It is by no means possible and everything's being said. I can hear voices, but I cannot make out all the words. Second of all, I'm still waiting for my information that I requested regarding the mask policy system also. I had specifically requested a copy of the state statute or exactly the order under which masks were being required a week ago, was not posted on the building. And I'm still waiting to hear back on that. I did receive a letter in mail today, but it's vague and not specific. So I'm going to reiterate my request under the Freedom of Information Act for a copy of the law requiring wearing masks at city meetings. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on, consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items listed. Claims report. Claims dated July 14, 2020 through July 27, 2020. City council meeting then is July 13, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have any comments or questions about to ask before we move? Hearing, Mr. Samson on jail.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I need to remind council persons that we need to speak out louder so everyone can hear it possibly. It's really fun dealing with next, I understand. Huh? Nice one. Okay, mayor's report. The Piatt County Farm Bureau is hosting an electronics recycling event this Wednesday, July 29th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Forest Preserve Park. Check out the average and virtual events. Sun, flow yoga, peaceful Monday hikes, Sunday formal garden tours. Visit their website to find out more. East Central Illinois Workman is hosting a drive-through job fair for Piatt County residents on Tuesday, August 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Forest Preserve Park. You will be able to directly connect with area employers that are currently hiring. And ECI Network Worknet staff will provide information about their jobs, training, and placement services. As a side note, there are currently twenty-four businesses hiring positions in Monticello. The city of Monticello is hosting a virtual solar power hour for those interested in learning more about solar projects for residential and commercial use. The event will be held on Tuesday, August 25th at 12:00 p.m. and login information will be posted on the city's website closer to the page. This event is one of several through a partnership with the CU Solar 4.0 partnership, which the city of Monticello is a member of. Don't forget the farmer's market on Tuesday from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. I'm sorry, Thursday from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. New business is coming to town. I'm sure lots of you have heard about, but officially, Welcome to Tractor Supply Company, which will be opening in the former shop called this November. Moving on to new business. I would like to appoint Joanne Hodges to the Police Pension Fund Board for a one-year term to expire May 31st, 2021. And I would also like to appoint Kelly Fournette, Police Pension Fund Board, for a one-year term to expire May 31st, 2021. Is there a motion to approve my recommendation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? Can I have a roll call, please, Jill?
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Resolution 2020-34. A resolution amending a conditional use permit for 450 West Main Street. Carol?
Thank you, Mayor. Jerry Sample is the owner of 450 West Main Street, which is currently a couple blocks away. He has his dojo studio there and back in 2013, when he purchased, before he purchased the property, he requested and received a conditional use permit from the city to allow two main uses on one parcel, that was the dojo studio and auto restoration business. Mr. Jerry is not one who sits still ever. There he is. He wants to also construct a nine-hole major golf course on the entirety of the parking lot space, offering another option for downtown. But to remake the plan, we need to amend this conditional use permit to allow those three uses. So again, the dojo academy and auto restoration business and the nature of golf now. A public notice was published in the July 1st edition of local paper and all adjacent property owners were notified by certified mailing as per state statute. A public hearing was held at the July 20th Planning and Zoning Board meeting and no public comment was made. After further discussion, the Planning and Zoning Board voted to recommend approval to this plan and seven yes, zero no, zero absent, and Jerry is here if he has any questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2020-34, a resolution amending a conditional use permit for 450 West Main Street? So moved. Is there a second? Second. Any comments, questions? Mr. Sample?
Will you still have enough parking if you take that part in the way?
Pardon me?
Will you still have enough parking there?
Yes, I don't believe that the parking will change a bit because the kids get dropped off martial arts and they pick them back up, so they park back at the front door. I figure most of the traffic gets a tug, but hopefully there's kids on bicycles and walking up in the prolio, so.
There'll still be some parking for people who want to drive their ass.
Oh, yeah, there is, where there's the north side and there's also the west side also as street parking.
Mayor? Yeah?
Is this for private use or for the public use for?
Oh, public use. It'll be open up. They'll be inciting.
And use?
Yes.
Anyone else? Hearing, Mr. Samson, I need a roll call, please.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Ms. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you. Orders 20-35, an ordinance for variance to the sign regulation at Sage Woods. Carol?
Thank you, Mayor. Sage Woods is the name of the subdivision on the, should be coming out north side of the, that's the act of the adult community, the city council, which is known back to residential home. And they would like to put a monument sign at the entrance there, but this is residential, the residential zone, sorry, the sign regulation didn't come from what they would be where else in the subdivision. So they would like to kind of keep everything in conformity with the neighborhood. The sign itself will be eight feet, three inches tall, including the capstone, which saves the four-foot sign height requirements stated in the zoning ordinance, and it will be illuminated, which is on a valid residential sign. So they are requesting variance to those sign regulations for the residential signs so that they can proceed with their proposal. A public notice was published in the July 1st edition of the local paper and all adjacent property owners were notified by certified mailing as per state statute. The Planning and Zoning Board held a public hearing at their meeting July 20th and a public comment was made. After further discussion, the Planning and Zoning Board voted to recommend approval of this variance request and yes, zero no, zero absent, and State House is here. If you have any question, we'll be happy to go.
Thank you. Is there a motion to waive second reading of Orders 2020-35? Is there a second?
Second.
I need a vote, please.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Orders 2020-35, an ordinance for variance to the sign regulation Sage Woods? So moved. Is there a second? Second. Any questions? Comments? Hearing, Mr. Samson, Jill?
Mr. Frericks?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
No.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
And Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on, Resolution 2020-36. A resolution for conditional use permit allowing a school private or public on urban residential RV zone property. Carol?
Thank you, Mayor. Monticello Christian Avenue, which is located just to the south of where we're at right now, would like to purchase the former Dr. Building owned by Kirby Medical Center to relocate the school from their current location, the street on Sage Street. The space would offer more square footage for the school operations. Organization offers preschool, pre-pendiatrist, and kindergarten classes, as well as after-school programs and before-school programs and summer care. Enrolled in is forty-five students, eighteen staff members. The off-street parking space requirements are met, we're in agreement that runs with the property. The zoning ordinance requires a conditional use permit for a school public or private located in an RV zone. So they're questioning that conditional use permit relating to forward their plans. A public notice was published in the July 1st edition of the local paper and all adjacent property owners were notified by certified mailing as per state statute. The public hearing was held July 20th last week, where a public comment was solicited and the clerk read two submitted letters by county board members and then member of the county board spoke with concerns about carbon block and maintenance. State House, representing Kirby Medical Center, which is the current owner of the property, clarified that agreement was waived, like stated earlier with the county, that it takes twenty-three spaces specific to the building and sixty-one more spaces that are shared. That agreement runs perpetuity with the property. With no further questions, Planning and Zoning Board voted to recommend approval of the conditional use permit request, seven yes, zero no, zero absent. And Reform Mayor's here, Suzanne Mills is here, and Stephen Alston as well. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2020-36, a resolution for conditional use permit allowing a school public or private on an urban residential RV zone property? So is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions before we move?
I have a question. Being a school facility, you're located now, you're in its heart for students and taking them outside and have location, are there plans for, you know, to get outside?
We hope in the future that we potentially build something if that opportunity came about. The Forest Preserve Park is a little bit down the road, so it's obviously part of there, but is an option. And then, yeah, so that's kind of the plan right now. Not needing in short term, more longer. I'm sure it didn't stop, just curious.
Anyone else? Not seeing anyone moving, I guess I'll ask for a vote, please.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Standing.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Rest, oh, excuse me. Orders 2020-37. An ordinance approving a conditional use permit request allowing multiple main buildings in uses, multi-family dwelling as a principal use, and a PUD in a business zone. Carol?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as we discussed, the city had published our class proposals last call and Mr. Atkins, which is the county group, has submitted a proposal for this project. Because of the nature of the project, it allows us to apply for a land unit development. Just reminded everyone what that is. The process intended to encourage and address creative development, redevelopment opportunities for areas that otherwise may not be allowing their current regulations. Kind of streamlined the process of those, putting several variances in that. The PUD is beneficial to developer and that they can achieve what their goals are and beneficial to the city in that we have the ability to put extra restrictions to hire with some consideration for different components of the project. But a PUD in a business zone is allowed only upon issuance of a conditional use. The property, the project, will feature twenty-one townhomes, each either off-street parking and some have garages as well. Part of the project also includes a DCO commercial area with three twelve-hundred-square-foot buildings and four thousand square feet of outdoor outdoor to leave. There are twenty-one off-street parking spaces and a private commercial lot in between the residential and commercial area, in addition to the municipal lots, which are just across the tracks. The city does have plans to redesign Park Street, which has been discussed for many, many, many years, to work in conjunction with this development, widening the road. And the belt will be installing pedestrian bicycle trail connecting Washington Street to rural Street. That is one of the safety concerns that we discussed with the pedestrian bicycle track that they go to the pool right now. You'd have to think they're on the side of the road, but they're not. So the development would address the general rules identified in the city's comprehensive plan and then develop it strategically downtown development. In a business zone, a multi-family dwelling use is allowed only upon issuance of a conditional use, plus with it being multi-family, different clusters of houses, you'll have multiple main buildings in conjunction with the commercial side. So they're also requiring conditional use for multiple main uses. The separation distance between main structures should be no less than the height of the tallest building, which in this case is thirty-four feet, four inches. The design shows a minimum separation of twenty-one feet. The zoning ordinance also requires two off-street parking spaces per unit. While all individual townhomes have off-street parking, five of the units spread throughout four of the six clusters of buildings only offer one space. City staff is comfortable with this deviation due to the amount of off-street parking available as well as the municipal lots. In order to have the opportunity to move forward with the process, Mr. Atkins is requesting a conditional use permit to allow multiple main buildings in uses, and multi-family dwelling use in a business zone, and a conditional use permit to allow limited development in a business zone with deviation from the parking requirements of multi-family dwelling use, or multi-family dwelling and building separation distance. A public notice was published in the July 1st edition of the local paper and all adjacent property owners were notified by certified mailing as per state statute. Staff did receive comments and events from hearing, which I believe is in the number of, I believe, those who've heard me talk enough. And then we also heard from Mr. Brunt earlier. The Planning and Zoning Board held a public hearing at their meeting last week and an adjacent property owner asked about the construction schedule and spoke in support of the project. After further discussion, the Planning and Zoning Board voted to recommend approval of the place, plus the PUD request, seven yes, zero no, zero absent. Staff did receive concerns from Derek, who spoke earlier, which we shared with all of you. And Spencer Nolan and Kevin are here, I believe, in that group, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion to waive second reading of Orders 2020-37? Is there a second?
Second.
Vote, please.
Mr. Frericks?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Vogt?
No.
Mr. Rock?
No.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
And Mr. Coon?
No.
Motion does not pass.
So this will be considered our next meeting in two weeks, okay? Thank you. Any comments or questions of the partners that have heard you? Any discussion, questions, comments?
Just in terms of addressing the safety, what do you see, you know, the concern of having the trucks and the trains? How do you see this traffic flow working to make everybody safe?
Well, I think if you read the RFP, I hope I'm talking loud enough, it does address it multiple times, talking about the walkway being connected to downtown, to across the aquatic center and down to, I think, the old Tressel. So that's what the RFP asked for. One of the other items was talking about multi-family or multi-family opportunities there. So we thought we were following the RFP. The last thing we want to do as an organization is put anybody's safety at risk or harm the town or harm the people in the town. So we did put the plan together and the city had talked to us and talked about widening the road, put a sweeping bin in the road and some other items. So I thought we had looked at that. You know, so the parking is in driveways. It's not exactly long street. And I live on the street and I don't know how fast trucks should be going down any of it.
I appreciate the time and work that has been put in to the proposal, just for me personally, waiving the second reading, just to make sure that some of the concerns that have come in, to make sure that we're taking a look at it, come all in most without waiving the second reading. And so, again, appreciate the time and work that has been put in and the idea, as LeJune said, there's certainly a need, given the choice that we had earlier this year. I think this one is a much safer option for our community in that it is easily accessible to the downtown area, to the grocery store, the ice box. So I do want to make sure we address some of those other concerns that have been brought up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, council, again, I would encourage you to reach out if you have any questions. I'm going to answer them. Mr. Atkins group and the state house.
Thank you. Moving on to Orders 2020-38. An ordinance approving a purchase and sales agreement with Spencer Atkins concerning the properties commonly known as 416 West Washington and 203 North Park Street in Monticello, Illinois.
So that'll actually be postponed for the next meeting as well, since I'm in the zone.
Got you. Very good. Thank you.
You may make a motion to postpone Orders 2020-38 to August 10th.
Someone make that motion.
So moved. Is there a second? Second. Can I have a roll call, please?
I apologize, who's second in that?
You're sure.
All right, Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All the, all the ordinance reports, we'll start entering. You shouldn't be on one of Rich's cup fans in the room.
I believe what I said was all in good, all in fine favor.
Wendell? Wendell?
Uh, I appreciate the, uh, renewal of the street sweepper going around. I see that in my in-town past few days. It's certainly helping out. Got a lot of, lots of, uh, going on there, so I thank you for that. Other things look like they're going along. We've, we've been able to get the grass cleared up on a couple of questionable properties and things look good. That's all there.
Thank you. Rodney? Michael?
Um, I have spent, uh, the last couple of weeks since our last meeting trying to get, uh, feedback on the campus issue. Uh, since it seemed like the direction of the council was, uh, to move towards opting out. Um, I can tell you that the feedback that I'm getting is much different than that. Um, I had asked Terry for the survey that we did last fall, uh, which was admittedly a little unscientific since people couldn't vote more than once. But the vote was 307 for, 127 against. Uh, I posted a couple of, I've asked for feedback from citizens regarding it. I think the feedback has been very, uh, respectful. Uh, I posted one this afternoon in the Monticello Community Forum and just quite quick survey. Uh, the people that responded, 40 people were for it, three people were against it. Uh, so I am hoping that they have opened it up or at least some discussion. My feeling is if we, uh, did this on conditional use, um, the council would still get control of, uh, campus activities, uh, businesses that come through. We would know exactly what it is, who they are, be able to vet them, know exactly the location. Uh, I think based on what I'm finding, and I would encourage all the councils to maybe do some surveys of their constituents to see if they reflect that, um, is that, you know, I think that 70/30 is probably pretty close to what I'm getting in response. And so I think it would be a little short-sighted for the council to completely opt out. I don't think it reflects, uh, what the, the people of Monticello feel about this issue. I think doing it by conditional use would still give the council control and give people plenty of input on each, each individual proposal. Uh, but, you know, I, I would, I would encourage us to maybe have another discussion next time to see if this is exactly what we want to have on, uh, the agenda on the 27th of August.
Thank you. Hannah?
I've been noticing on, well, from Sage Drive on State Street, from Sage Drive to, is that Marri? Is that Mary? Mary, yeah. There is tons of cars parking and, like, we live on that street and we can hardly make that turn even because there's two cars parked, you know, just right there at the end. So I'm wondering if we should do some looking into maybe doing the same as, like, Charter, maybe you had parking on one side at some point? Um, I think there's about 10 cars right now parked on that street. And there's, you know, of course, no side street until you get them on. So there's tons of cars, of course, coming up, well, will be, coming down Sage Drive and people trying to make that turn too. There will not be room. So I just thought something we could maybe look into.
That's Sage Street?
Yes.
From William to Mary?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
I have nothing to add, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, John.
No, sir.
John Carter?
Yes. Uh, this is Tom Sperry. I had the opportunity to spend some time at the sheriff's office at the Trailblazers for the car show. Uh, we got to meet a bunch of, uh, individuals and share some information with them on internet safety as well as meet a bunch of kids and talk to them about, uh, safe computer, you know, of course, internet safety as well as, as some drug information and pass out some, some little fun stuff. So I was very excited for that. Also, uh, this last Thursday, uh, I was with the FBI and we were able to destroy, uh, 106.8 pounds of medications that had been turned in to us through our site at the hospital as well as through the, uh, the office itself. So, uh, very grateful to those. Out of the hands of those with my choosers and disposal department. It continues on. If you have any, any more to say?
Thanks, John. Uh, Terry?
Uh, real short, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, again, I'm a semi-broke record but putting these meetings together and doing what it takes to, to make it as, as fluid as possible. Um, you know, today, and as always, I'd like to thank Callie, John McFarland, Warren Beckcap, and Jill Potts. Each and every time we do a test, and I tested fine today. So I don't know what the issue is tonight. We, we battled with wifi, we battled with sound, and we tried different microphones. So a lot of effort goes into these meetings and I want to thank those individuals. Um, nuisance ordinance for the grass clippings and the tall yards. I'm going to get that to you, um, as soon as I can. I apologize you haven't got it yet, um, but we've been, been doing a few other things. Um, to the caller's point, the FOIA request, I took a, a voice request. Should not happen because we wanted to determine correspondence, uh, that I gave to you guys and I sent, uh, I believe, uh, FOIA officer sent that to me. That's your request that's, maybe we should just do, they have to be written in the letter so it's very clear, uh, what the individual needs. So, um, that's all I have to say.